First order was say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any public audience? Anybody? Anybody? All right. Great. Okay. Committee reports and communications.
Hi. Okay. So, all five elementary schools are planning on hosting information nights for incoming kindergarten parents in the next few weeks. And similarly, Henry James recently held an orientation for sixth grade parents. Henry James will also be holding a second mental health seminar for parents on February 22nd on managing teen anxiety. And also will be hosting Neon Night on February 23rd. And then at the high school, Guys and Dolls had two successful weekends of shows. Ticket sale-wise, too, but it also partnered with several local businesses and McLean's and some assisted living homes to bring in a wider audience. And the track team and boys wrestling teams also had recent successes. The boys sprint medley relay qualified for nationals. And Marshall Potter placed second place at Class L's for shot put. And boys wrestling placed fourth overall at Class L's and had six top-five performances. And then for girls basketball, Amanda Gallagher reached 1,000 career points.
Amazing.
Very cool. Awesome. Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, I actually do have an update from the communications subcommittee. So, we met on February 1st with Neil and David Prinstein, Director of IT. So, we hit on three things. First was the video of the Vision of the Graduate. Very well done. Had some comments, some feedback, but it was really, really good. It'll be the first of a series they're looking to put out. With, I think, the first one within the next month or so is when they're looking to get that out. And that's just kind of get that out there. We talk about Vision of the Graduate, but it kind of, what really goes into that? What does it look like? It's got, you know, people commenting in the video. And again, it'd be the first of a series. So, it's really give people insight into what Vision of a Graduate really is. So, that was, that was really good to see. We also talked about being budget season, the budget website being updated. Kind of more current, fresh, kind of information. And that's already been updated by Katie. So, it looks good. Was out there today. Take a look at it. Gives a nice summary of where we are and where we're going and where we got to get. And she'll keep that updated throughout the, the season. And then the final one, Neil gives an update on Latimer Lane and how that's coming along and how that's looking really good. The original timetable there was December 2024 to be wrapped up. Looking good to hit that timeline. And no specific date there, but what we're hoping to do is look into communications for an event in the fall, if it's ready in the fall with all the renovations, to kind of celebrate, you know, that big deal. So, yeah, we were able to hit on those things and it was nice to get the committee back together and go over things, so.
Just a quick, since we're in budget season, I don't know if it's Josh or Katie, just in case anybody doesn't know, just have, about just a quick where to find the budget section.
The website of the Board of Ed is up. And there's a tab for budget.
Easy. Can't make it easy. Awesome. Justin?
Nothing yet.
Nothing right now. Sharon?
So, couple of things. One, we will have policy meeting tomorrow, just as a reminder for everyone. See you guys bright and early. Thank you. Neil's bringing coffee.
You didn't know that, Sharon?
I'm joking. You don't have to, Neil. I was just joking. Okay. So, just that reminder. And we have a lot to go through. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is Lydia and I went to a meeting that was sponsored by Cave that talked about kids, you know, children within our school that, in essence, are getting lost. And, and I'll allow Lydia to talk a little bit more about that. But even within that meeting, a lot of suggestions came up around kids not, forgive me for saying kids, when I say kids, I mean students. With them being absent a lot for, and chronic absenteeism came up. And the discussion around that was, you know, maybe we need to even look at redefining what absenteeism is because, in essence, one thing is students are being, are out because of chronic, because of COVID. And COVID can factor into those days. And so, we know that chronic absenteeism is factored based on 10% of the days, which is, that means a student would be out of school a total of 18 days. And so, one of the things that I wanted to bring attention to is that we were identified in a publication. And when I say "we," I will, in essence, read what it says. And it, I just shared it with Jeff in saying that what I found interesting was that it, you know, referred to us. They talked about Hartford and other areas, but then what it says, if you bear with me a moment, it says chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10%, as I said. It doubled from 15% before pandemic to 30% during the year 21-22. 65% of all schools had at least 20% absenteeism from '21 to '22. However, one small example more than doubled in Simsbury, Connecticut, a wealthy suburb of Hartford. And they're saying from, we went from 6% in 2018 to 19 to 14% '21 to '22 and remained elevated above 12% last year. And so...
And 65% or over 20%?
Yeah. 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 With, and so, and so what that brought to mind for me is, you know, when we look at the data, have we seen any trends? Is it, and I don't know if there's any way for us to define or, you know, identify, you know, how much COVID has factored into that? Is one. And that's why I went back and I went looking to see if there's been any discussions around that because COVID is going to stay with us and no one complained when it shows up. But typically, I know I've had it, you're going to be out for more than three days.
Right.
And so, I just wanted to share that. And I didn't know if that's something that, you know, we can look into for data and if that's something that we need to talk about, just to try to get ahead of it.
Yeah, we could frame some questions and then come back at a meeting and work through that.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Sharon, just to let you know as well, our social workers are making their professional learning community goals around looking at this chronic absentee data. So, we can certainly share with you some of the data that they're looking at, some of the strategies that they are using to turn the tide in this. But it's something that is completely on their radar so they can strategize accordingly.
And I think in closing for me, I thought, you know, if we really have, you know, there's one, I call them littles. The littles being out one thing, but, you know, middle school, high school, it's really, and then thinking about, you know, we know that teachers are, you know, got a lot on their plate already, right? But then if we have to spend the time with trying to get students up to speed, we're trying to make sure that the rest don't fall behind, then, you know, how are we trying to manage that? So...
So, when they're looking at that data, are they parsing out absenteeism for sick days and medically excused versus they're just absent?
I mean, every school has a school attendance team that looks, charts these students that are heading toward chronic absenteeism and talking about why the absences, the nurses involved, the social workers involved. And there's a team looking at students who are, and then there are notification systems for parents around...
I'm well aware of this. So, I just got actually letters from two of my kids who were out for a week plus for illnesses. And when I was talking to the staff, some of whom were on this team at Squadron, one of the things that they mentioned was it's unclear when they pull the dat- data from, I guess it's Power School, wherever they're pulling it from, it's not really parsed out and defined. These are medically excused days versus just absent days. So, just one thing from like my conversations this week on this topic with someone at Squadron is I'm not quite sure that the system is either set up or used properly, if it is set up, to sort out what's medically excused versus not.
So, the legislation to notify you in written form doesn't make that delineation, right? So, if you hit six absences or nine absences, we are required by statute to notify you to say, hey, we've noticed. Now, certainly because we know who our kids are and our families are, the nurses are having conversations, they know it's, we've actually softened our, the language a little bit in some revisions that we would like to make because we know that these issues can come up. So, that's kind of one piece of it. This other piece that we're talking about is of those students who are flagging as chronically absent, we are digging in deeper as to why. So, these aren't typically students that have just had a tough run with it, right? We're looking at what is getting in the way of them regularly attending school. So, that's kind of some different conversations and questions we're asking.
Let's do this. Appreciate your real-life story. But it sounds like the, the team's working on it, so let's, let's not get ahead of it. Let's like, let them try to do the work and then we'll come back. And it sounds like we're going to have a really nice, robust conversation about it. So...
Yep, I'm good.
Josh?
I only wanted to make a shout-out to, I was doing the online registration for high school. And I don't think I said it last time, but the, the person who's in charge of Capstone did all...
Dr. McKay?
Dr. McKay did videos. And I absolutely liked the videos. I thought it was a nice touch. It was something new that I hadn't seen in the past. And I thought it was more clear and for people who are super busy and don't always read the program of studies from page to page, the videos were nice.
Thank you. Make sure she gets that feedback.
Yeah. So, the, what Sharon was referencing to was called Connecticut's Unspoken Crisis: Getting Young People Back on Track. And, and this was really an effort with the Dalio Foundation, which I'm sure many of you may know or new members may not be aware of, but there is a robust report about student engagement, disengagement, and from the Dalio Foundation, who's done a lot of work with the governor and through Connecticut in terms of public education. It's well worth reading. I can get you a copy if you want. It's only about like 70 pages, but it's, 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 it's got some interesting statistics in, in that. And superintendents are aware of it. So, it was a very interesting conversation because there were members of Hartford East, Hartford community members, Hartford Workforce Partners there, two legislators there, so, and it was held in Hartford. And it was, it was a good discussion about where, where are we going forward with our, with our students in, in public education in Connecticut? And it was really based on, on, on the Dalio Report. So, so that's what that was. Briefly, I attended the, in DC, the Equity Symposium in, end of January. And through NSBA, we had a board meeting and we had a one-day Equity Symposium, which was, which was phenomenal. And we had about 800 members, or, or board leaders and superintendents and ed leaders from around the country that came for, for this in, in DC. And we also had two days of an equity forum. So, we had, it was a real work, a work weekend, but it was well worth it. We were able to spend two days on the Hill. We got to see all of our legislators on, in Congress, in, in the Senate, on the Hill. And, and so, some of the big takeaways, and we know the well, thank God in Connecticut, we have a good working relationship with public education, with our State Department of Education, with our Commissioner, and also with our, with our delegation in, in DC, and also with NSBA. But again, and we'll talk more later as, as we talk, as Matt will talk later about the breakfast, but some of the same concerns were student health and well-being, full funding of the IDEA Act, which, you know, you hear me talk about a lot, committing of title funds, promoting equitable access from technology, education, advocating for student nutrition funding needs, and the promoting protection, accountability, use of public funds. So, these are really at the federal level that we are advocating for, but of course, it all transpires down to each state and down to each state, down to each district, down to each kid. So, so more to come on that as, as we're in the middle of the, obviously, of Congress right now, and they will not finish really until, until August. And then this morning, Matt and I went to the legislative breakfast sponsored by, by Crec. And Matt will give you the intel on, on everything this morning. But unfortunately, our legislators, Lisa Semenera and Melissa Osborne, did not make it this morning, but there was, were other legislators that were there and a number of superintendents and board members and other ed people that were there. So, it was very well attended and Matt will really give you the real deal on what we had discussed this morning.
No pressure. Finish and then I'll, I'll give the real deal.
I will report on our curriculum meeting that was February 8th. Jen was there, Lydia was there, Sharon. We had Sulemki and David Prinstein, Prinstein, and we had an audience, we had a person from the public there as well. We spoke on the curriculum online platform that we've all been talking about quite a bit. Would love for have, to have everyone check it out. If you look on our website, it's available there. It's, and we're tracking the traffic, so we'd love all the parents to be checking it out. And it's on our website, it's called the EduPlanet, and you'll be able to find all the information about our courses and our studies and any curriculum that you might find interesting. We spoke of, we had a, we came back to the Applied Art Credit. We talked about the number and percentage of students who exceeded the required 1.1 fine credit, fine art credit. And in the class of 2021, it was 47%. Class of '22, it was 52%. And at class of '23, it was 50% that are taking more than one fine art credit, which is, and fine arts is definitely broad. It's got, you've got music, you've got arts, you've got culinary, you've got a lot of, we've got a lot of opportunities for it. So, it's great that they're using them and, and it does give a full exposure to our students. We also spoke about the Connecticut State Law that changed that students coming into the 20, class of '24, '25 year will be, have to be five years old by September 1st. In the past, it was January 1st. The state has changed it to come in line with most of the states in the country. We're kind of the last state to get there. But there is a opportunity for parents who have kind of planned on next year being their four-year-old turning five to come to school. So, we have waivers available to those families. We have spoken to them, we're speaking to them next week.
Yeah. We're going to have a meeting with any parents that are interested in applying for a waiver. We will have an in-person opportunity on the 26th and an online opportunity on the 29th. And that's what kicks off our waiver process.
And so, that's an opportunity. And we also spoke about the Artificial Intelligence Team. David Prinstein, our Director of Instructional Technology, has created a team of teachers and staff to investigate AI and its impact on our schools. We intend on some point shortly when we gather data to set a policy for our school system and how AI will work within our district plans. So, that was a big day. We got a lot done. And...
We did.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Just one quick celebration. At the end of January, we heard that the Connecticut State Department of Education was partnering up with Donors Choose, which is a nonprofit that supports teachers doing great things in their classrooms. And they said that they were going to entertain mini-grants that aligned with the state's priorities specifically around learning acceleration for any new projects. And Matt put out a communication to our teachers. We had multiple teachers apply at present. We've heard of 20 affirmative grant awards. So, that was really great. They jumped on the A and they closed it down. So, there's no more opportunities. So, our people really took advantage of that. So, as soon as I collect a little more detail about some of the projects, I will share those details with you, but some great celebration.
That's great. That's really great.
Yeah, had, came off our four-day weekend. Thank you all. And had a number of meetings related to Latimer Lane today, including one with the state officials who approve various elements of the plan. And just want to set you up for something you'll be asked to vote for next week, which is the meeting this morning was about something called FFNE, which is furniture, finishings...
Fixtures.
Fixtures and equipment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Furniture, finishings, and equipment. And technology. So, that, you're going to get a packet for approval next Tuesday night. Your vote is the last one that will allow us to then actually order all of that stuff, which we need to be doing. And the basics of it are that it's had a very thorough process that Tecton has led us through, and Principal Uzetti, in addition to himself being very involved in the decisions around classroom setups, and has involved his staff in those conversations as well. So, the teachers and others at Latimer have had a, had an opportunity. So, you're going to get a packet that represents about $1.6 million of the overall Latimer Lane budget. And, you know, we could send you the big packet. We're not going to do that. We're going to, but if you do want to see any more details, Jason Casey would have them. We're going to give you enough to, hopefully, that you feel comfortable voting to approve the $1.6 million line item next, next Tuesday night. So, that's, and then the other good news, thanks for, to Josh for the communications update. He talked a little bit about the timeline. It continues to look good. And we hope shortly to be able to announce actually getting a little ahead of schedule. Don't want to overpromise, but we're looking...
That's great.
We're looking really good.
That's great.
And Neil, on that same, I think, and budgetary-wise, we're doing pretty good, right?
Yes, so I should say that, too. Thank you, Sharon. The, the $1.6 million of FFNE and technology that will be put in front of you is within the budget for the project. So, it's, it's right on target.
Katie? You never asked Katie. I want to ask Katie here. Going to get you in the rotation here. I have nothing. I just, I just want to comment the, the stat that Tara said about 50% of students having more than one fine arts credit. That, that is just phenomenal. You know, we talk a lot about that program in all, multiple facets. So, it's, that's great, that, that's a great data point to prove that the students are taking advantage of the, of the offerings that we put before them. So, just, that's just phenomenal. She's a superintendent.
Let me give you a little update on the, on the breakfast this morning. So, thanks, Lyd. It was...
Real deal.
Real deal. So, in, in all the years of attending this event, I will say it was extremely well-attended today. Part of that reason is people are upset and they're concerned with the governor's budget because the governor has done a little bit of shuffling of dollars, right? Moving dollars potentially away from some districts' educational cost share funding and putting it towards preschool. So, in a sense, it's, it's hit the education world, K-12 versus preschool, as a result of this new legislation that a few of you mentioned this evening. So, I have to say, in all my years of going, to have the Chair of the Education Committee, Jeff Currie, there, really have his position be in unison with Board of Ed members and superintendents, I don't want to say it's rare because normally people come with kind of individualized concerns. Things were very much in alignment today. And one of the big topics, in addition to the overall budget they talked about, was excess cost, which we've talked quite a bit about here at the table. And it's interesting. It is impacting all districts. So, while I know we, we sat and studied at the workshop, various elements of our special education budget, a large portion of what we'll talk about again, you know, no surprise tonight, is some of that same information and putting it out there. Excess cost has really become an in-season, timely challenge and burden for just about everybody. So, it was reiterated that if anything can be done, we should be paying attention to this, but there are real challenges in the short session, as Lydia and I were saying, of trying to really make something happen. But just to give you a little bit of an overview on that excess cost piece and the impact it's had locally. So, the legislation is written in a way that the state should fund 85% of your excess cost of four and a half times per pupil. So, last year, we got only 73%. This year, we're going to get potentially 68%. So, in terms of real numbers to us, the difference between last year and this year is about 230,000. If they would fund the legislation the way it was written and committed to, it's about 700,000. We would be having a very different conversation about deficits, about programming, and where holes are in our budget if they kind of lived to how the, the legislation is written. You know, the challenge is special needs are up across the state, these costs are up across the state, there's one pool of money, they can't go beyond what that appropriation is without special permission to do so. So, it's not as easy as just saying, hey, fund it to what the percentage is. They're kind of held to the line item. But I thought the positions were really presented in a very coherent way, aligned. It was, it was almost a bit of a rallying call, which was what, kind of had a, a better feel, a more supportive feel to it. So, we'll have to see, but, you know, I know sometimes as we problem solve locally, we get very caught up in the fact of what our challenge is. Small districts, large districts, districts across the state are all seeing similar patterns in terms of their ability to respond in real time to some of the needs of these students and some of the escalating program costs. So, it was, it was a, I thought it was a good, it was important and a good meeting.
And I think too, because I think Jeff Currie, being a former board member from East Hartford and ed coat and being in the legislature for over 10 years, you know, has a grasp and a handle on, on what is coming down the pike, in particular this year. So, as Matt had mentioned, alluded to, it's not just, it's not just one district, it's all the districts that are facing this. And this excess cost situation has, this year in particular, there is a task force. Of course, this task force has not met since last year and they, you know, they keep throwing it on for another year. It's a short session. It doesn't look like anything is really going to happen this year with this task force because of this short session. And it also is an election year, so a lot of legislators are not going to be focusing on some of these issues that they, that they really should be talking about. But the sped costs, the, you know, the funding, you know, no more mandates. I mean, we, we've said, and I think it was very clear, that they were not going to come forward with anything in there. We just need to maintain support of what we have right now without taking any more away that, that we have. But I think all the superintendents and board members that were there felt very cohesive in the message to the legislators, that they heard us loud and clear about what is going on because they're getting tapped right and left from urban, suburban, rural, from all four corners of the states of, of what's going on. So, it's, it's going to be a battle. It's not to say it won't be. The governor, you know, declared last week, you know, that he's going to start, he will pick, you know, pre-K against K-12. And that really perked up to a lot of legislators. So, more to come on that, too. But we just, we just have to keep in contact with our legislators and tell them how much to support, keep supporting education and, and keep that at the forefront of what we're doing.
Well, I was just going to ask, how can we support the effort and just kind of keep us in mind of...
This is it. I mean, if anybody's willing to testify, I've testified a number of times over the years, but if anyone's willing, you know, you can send in, into Ed Committee, their Appropriations Committee now, anything regarding any facet of education, if there is something in particular. Obviously, we'll run it through Matt and, and in terms of a testimony, but...
Oh, yes. It's really coordinated. I mean, the area superintendents groups all have a spokesperson, testimonies written. I mean, it's, it's...
Right. Right.
The last decade, it's about as streamlined and focused as I've seen it, which is a...
Which is, which is important so that, so that we, we do that. But never hurts to, to contact them and let them know that we're, you know, we're still important.
Was anybody there? And I don't know if they, if that happens, but does the, anyone from the governor's office come to that?
No.
Okay.
It is not. It is strictly, it's invited for the legislators.
And I was just, but I was only asking because what you're saying, the, you know, folks that showed up. And, you know, sometimes if you hear it and you see it firsthand, you know, so...
Once, at one point, the governor did come just to introduce and welcome and what have you, but normally it is not, because this is a Crec, HASSA, you know, cave event. It is for superintendents and, and board members. And it's, it's, it's our forum for our legislators to have conversation between them and us about what's pertinent, what's important, what's going on versus, you know, governor's office, or no one from the Department of Education was there either, so. Thank you.
Great. No? I'm good. All right. The, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes for the January 23rd meeting. Can I get a...
Motion to accept the minutes of the January 23rd meeting?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? How many, the approval of minutes of the January 31st workshop?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the January 23rd workshop?
Second. Great, thank you. Any, any discussion? I always forget about discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
To abstain?
Two abstains, extensions?
It's Lydia and I weren't there. We weren't there, sorry. Call us out.
Call us out. Go ahead.
Now I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2024 workshop.
I'd like to approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2024 budget workshop.
Second.
Second. Great. Any discussion?
Yes, I was in attendance on February 3rd. I remember that was a Saturday morning and I was here.
Beautiful Saturday morning.
Yeah, you had me out.
I guess you were here, Lydia.
I did come in with my coffee. I was.
Great. So do we need to amend?
I, I move the amended amendment.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Second.
We'll, we'll do it that way.
I'll second.
Great. Any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Great, thank you. Personnel.
Several items tonight, couple that require your action. The first is a resignation of a teacher at the high school. Phil Eisner has been a science teacher, life science teacher with us for just over seven years, teaching biology and then some of our biomedical science courses. And Mr. Eisner recently took another opportunity at a local district. We are very pleased with the long-term substitute that we're going to have in there for the rest of this year, who did a long-term substitute for us in these very classes last year for maternity leave. So we're in good shape for the rest of this year with this resignation and then we'll be anticipating hiring for the position in the spring. So I need that, that actually needs your motion.
I move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Phil Eisner effective February 4, 2024.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
All right. And then three recently announced retirements of people that I all hired when I was the principal of Simsbury High School. So, and it strikes me that when I look at the years, you add them up, it's 50 years of service between the three of them. So start with Doug Nielsen, who has been a business teacher at Simsbury High School for the past 12 years. Doug was actually, this is very much a second career for Doug. He was an international businessman, decided that he wanted to, on his bucket list was to teach before he retired. And he's been with us for 12 years. He's also played a really crucial role at the ABC House in town as the tutor. So, and Doug is actually retiring. As I said, he lived internationally for, and he's actually moving back to Finland. So congratulations to Doug as he takes his, this one's not until June 30th. We're good on this. We got Doug for a few more. All of these are June 30th. Martha O'Rourke has been a Spanish teacher at Simsbury High School for the past 20 years, very passionate and skilled Spanish teacher. I actually met Martha at my administrative internship in Canton in the late 90s. And then when I had an opportunity to come to Simsbury High School, she applied to our Spanish department here and has been here ever since and is looking forward to her retirement. And if I know Martha much, travel. And then Lori Werthen, who started as a special education teacher at Simsbury High School, but then made a shift probably about a decade ago and has been teaching social studies at Henry James. So just a really, you know, big part of the culture at Henry James and also looking forward to her retirement after 18 years of service at Simsbury. So all of those are retiring at the end of this school year and the motion is there for your consideration.
Sure. I move that the Board of Education accept the retirements of Doug Nielsen, Martha O'Rourke, and Lori Werthen effective June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion?
I just also wanted to say, I'm pretty sure, is it Mr. Nielsen the one who did, does the yearbook and stuff?
He did for many years. Yeah, he does.
Yeah, thanks.
He just stepped away from it, but he did for many years.
So I'd just like to say, you know, to Doug and all, you know, thank you for your years of service and hopefully you'll go off and enjoy your retirement.
Absolutely.
And then not requiring more, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I get it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Great, thank you.
And then not, not for voting, but for your information, you've seen some resignations recently in special education. We did a really great job finding some folks in mid-year who wanted to come make Simsbury their new home so that you could see here a special ed position at Tooton Hill School. This is actually in our intensive learning needs program, so program you've heard a lot about through our budget process. This will be a new teacher there. She started today, so Tooton is excited to have her. And then Christina, I want to get this right, Saprowski, is our new teacher in the intensive needs program at Simsbury High School and started today. So, and I saw her at the end of the day and she swore to me she's coming back tomorrow. So that's a good thing. She said she had a great first day.
That's great.
So welcome to, to those two special educators who are now part of the team. And then I'm really excited to be able to present the hiring of Phelan Koski as our new band director at Simsbury High School. Phelan jumped right in. He literally had been with us for about a week and then he was in the pit at Guys of Dolls for two straight weekends.
Conducting the spirit?
Yeah.
In the spirit rally?
At the rally?
During the spirit rally?
So just has jumped right in and really excited that as someone who took his methods classes in music at Simsbury High School, to kind of make that link to hiring him, really just excited for a long-term run with Phelan as our new band director.
That's great.
CIP. So Jason would normally do this, but we're going to have him come next week to the FFNE. So I can, I can take this one tonight. It's the third or fourth time we've put this in front of the board, but it's the timeline where we need to approve this to move it forward to the Board of Selectmen for part of their conversation. Really, the focus is on the year one projects, which we have listed in the exhibit. We don't have a heavy number of year one projects. We have the larger roofing project, flooring improvements, district network infrastructure. So not a, a great deal of projects year one, but we need to approve the, the six-year plan. We had some great conversation, I think, towards the tail end of our Board of Education workshop on some of the larger capital projects that we're going to need to come back to in like a formalized process, I think, next year and really brainstorm a direction and some, some different ideas, which I think we're all pretty excited about, which will be some heavy lifting. But in terms of this year, we need to move forward what we have at this point.
Any questions? I got a motion or somebody, the motion in front of you?
Move that the Board of Education's six-year capital improvement plan for the period of 2025, 2030 be adopted.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The budget. The budget. Right. So I get to drive tonight. Usually Sue drives for me on the slides, but I'm going to, you know, it's self-improvement.
Good job.
Click. How I look and how I touch. Well, that's just a, you know, it's a misnomer.
We had a professional learning session this afternoon.
We did, we did. So let's see how the first one works. Perfect. All right. So I have an opportunity tonight to present where we are in the budget process at this point. So the way I, you know, I feel pretty good about the process and I'll, I'll talk about it throughout, but there shouldn't be any significant surprises because of the way we build the budget. We build it in chunks over time, have an opportunity to get your input at the workshop and then come back and kind of present based on the feedback and input. So that's what I'll, I'll put before you tonight. I have about, I mean, it's quite a few slides. It's about 24 slides. So if I could get through the deck the best that we can, and then we can spend as much time as we want on clarifying questions and, and moving forward from there, if that makes sense. All right. So the first thing we do is we, we really prioritize along our strategic plan, right? You, you see these kind of four quadrants when we give any presentation at the board. And I know it can be like, okay, here's that slide again, but it really reminds us about the continuous improvement process that we're firmly grounded in and it represents the four main areas of our Board of Education goals. So when we start to frame our budget planning for the school year, we want to make sure that our principals and what they are looking for and what they're advocating for are aligned with our Board of Education goals. So it's just a reminder of how we do that. We have a goal for student success. We have a goal around our school culture, premier workforce, and our sustainable investments. So I think you'll find as we work through that all our priorities are clearly aligned with those areas. In terms of process, just to revisit the process, for those that might be watching at home, and I think it's important because these documents get posted on our, our website as well. This isn't a one-shot presentation to the board. It's a pretty thorough process that starts in that November, December timeframe when we have presentations from our program leaders and our, our building-based administrators talking to us about their priorities and really getting a good listen session about where they are, what are their challenges, what are their hopes, what are their innovative ideas, and how we can move that forward and start to collectively analyze that information. We get into December, we take a look at our mixed costs, our major drivers. We have our, our central office, our, our meetings, and then we have the tri-board meeting. And I know many of you were at the tri-board meeting this year. That's a meeting collaborative that takes place with the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Ed, really run and facilitated by the Board of Finance, where again, we put our fixed costs up in front of people. We talk about some of the challenges that we think we might be coming forward. Each board has a chance to do that and we're, and we're giving, we're giving guidance. You know, this year we were given guidance based on what, what Lisa Hebner did is she kind of looked at what a desired or reasonable tax increase might be, tried to align it with COLA, and then backed the guidance number into it. It was a little of a different way that we've looked at it in the past and it was a number of a 1.75% increase. We talked early on, wasn't really a target we could work ourselves towards due to where our fixed costs are, but we can talk about that as we, as we work our way through. We had the two bigger presentations to our Board of Ed. Katie Crisula came out and talked about special education, some of the challenging areas, some of the staffing needs. And then Neil did a staffing and enrollment presentation that really frames what the bulk of our budget looks like moving forward. And we had a real good half day a couple of weeks ago and I appreciate your efforts at the workshop. I find it one of the most productive meetings we can do and we took away from that some good feedback that I'll share in a few minutes. So here is the overall. I didn't switch any of those slides.
Katie did.
Katie. Yeah. Why don't I give this up now? It's a failed experiment. Thank you, team. Takes a village with me sometimes.
Try.
I did, I did. All right. So the overall budget number we put forward is in excess of $86 million. It's an increase of a little bit over $4 million from our operating costs last year, which is a 4.97% increase over last year's operating budget. So in the presentation, there's kind of three pieces to this puzzle that I'll go through. I like to share some contextual factors to really give some background information because I think it helps us to understand why the number looks like it does and we have some comparative information to share too in terms of what the market looks like out there. Return on investment, some celebratory information. I think it's important in a budget, again, like we frame with the Board of Education goals. The real reason we're here is for our students, right? And we need to make sure that what we put forward supports what they need and what our staff needs and what our, our families need to be successful. And then we get into the, the numbers of it all. So to start with context, always like to have a little balancing act, right? And this kind of grows out of the tri-board meeting and some of the localized challenges that we have, right? We talked about the cost of living increases being one of the data points that the Board of Finance will share with us as kind of a target. And the cost of living increase this year is, I think, about 3.2, 3.3%. So that's an important number to think about. Inflation, we know when we go to the grocery store what it looks like, right? We know that costs are up, so there's challenges with inflation. We have higher fixed costs, right? The last time we went through negotiations with our bargaining groups, particularly our teachers' union, the market yielded a higher return than it had in the past. So those are market-driven costs that are fixed costs that were locked into. And you compound that with the fact that the town is projected to see, to see zero grand list growth this year. So we've been fortunate over the past three years, two to three years, right, Amy, to take advantage of a bump in grand list growth in the town from the apartment build outs and those going online. That's really served as a, as a pretty significant offset when we get to the table with the Board of Finance and kind of look at those financial levers and they determine the mill rate. So that bubble has burst, in a sense. We don't have that advantage right now. So that's a challenge. That's a challenge locally that the Board of Finance has to grapple with. And the local mill rate, we're always cognizant of that, right? You want to be as affordable a community as you can be and we, we line up that mill rate, or I don't, but the Board of Finance does on an annual basis and looks at, at where those things are settled and looks at those factors. So we balance all those kind of localized challenges with the things we feel we need in our, in our budget and we try to be as responsible as we can. So we need to meet those contractual demands. We've had to adjust for market prices in tuition and transportation. We have enrollment-driven needs, really in special education programming that we'll share with you, and facilities and maintenance needs. We've talked about that as a board and those challenges over the last three to five years, like we're really behind in the generalized maintenance of our buildings. And then one of the pieces of the puzzle that you had talked to us about at the workshop was try to offset staffing, like, like talk to us about a plan of doing that to the best you can to try to bring that number down. And I'll, I'll talk through that as we move through the budget presentation. So just some other contextual data as we move through, just a snapshot of what our past six budgets have looked like from what my request as a requested percentage was when I came with my presentations and what the end game was in terms of approved budgets. So you, you can actually see what the trend has been. The first four years of that six-year spread, our average budget increase was 2%, right? That's before we really started to see that increase in enrollment. That's, a lot of that's pre-COVID, before we've seen an increase in student needs and certainly before inflation hit. And you can see the last two years, an increase, increasing cost trend and again, a year where I think we're going to grapple with that as well. So really put some time into trying to use this slide to shape our story this year. I think as we see budget numbers that are higher than maybe we've been comfortable with as a community in recent years, you look to, to the story and say like, do we have an expenditure problem? Right? So you look at, at different data points to really kind of reflect on that. One of the only audited data points across districts is what's called the per pupil expenditure, right? So this comes out of our major financial report that the state, that gets audited on an annual basis and it compares your costs all in to other districts' costs all in. And you can see our, our two-year spread there in terms of pupil expenditure, our most current data at $19,517 per student and what the state averages. So we're, we're pretty well below the state average there. When you look at the Hartford area towns, it's 27 communities, kind of right in the middle of that spread, all right? If you were to look at our DURG, I pulled our DURG today, which is the districts we're most compared to, most like in demographics, most like in financial makeup. We're actually seventh lowest out of the 21. So I pulled some peer communities, so you could see, we often talk about our academic performance in compared to these districts, our budgets in compared to these districts. And you can see Farmington's a little bit lower than us, but we're, we're in the market with these other districts. You know, we're not a major outlier in terms of per pupil expenditure. We don't have a huge expenditure issue that we're wrestling with. And I think it's important for us as a board to recognize that as we move forward. I pulled some local superintendent budgets. Everybody's a little bit different place in their process, but you can see some of these comparable districts again and what their superintendent budget presentation was and certainly our 4.97 is in the market. So I think this is, it's an interesting way to frame where we are as we work into a process in lieu of the, the guidance we were, we received and other factors that are going on.
It's a great slide. Jimmy, it just shows that we're.
I think it's, it's, it's an important look. I think it's, it's, it's an important look. In terms of enrollment, I thought it was important to bring this slide back out. This was a slide that really framed Katie Crisula's earlier presentation to the Board of Ed. And it's a five-year comparison of our overall enrollment, where we're up about 2%, up modestly. And then what our special education enrollment looks like in that same timeframe, right? So we're up 14.85% special education enrollment. So many of the staffing requests that we talk about are really enrollment-related requests. Much like if our overall enrollment went up, how would we respond to them? So I think it's an important way to frame that. So in terms of trends, our elementary, as you're well aware from, you know, Neil's prior presentations, our elementary enrollment is on the rise, and certainly our special education needs are on the rise as they are with many other districts. All right, so this is, is a slide that helps to frame where we are, where we were at the workshop, where we start today, before we kind of get into the particulars of the numbers and some other things. So when we sat down at the workshop and kind of presented that main driver slide to the board in terms of those significant categories, we are at a 6.93 overall increase. So it's a dollar increase over operating of about $5.6 million. As we sit here and present to you tonight, we've reduced that increase about $1.6 million, close to 2% to a 4.97. And we've done that by looking at a couple of key levers that I'll talk more about as we get into the presentation. We've taken the feedback of the board, you know, Jeff in particular, you kind of framed it for the board of, wasn't really a debate about the need for some of the new staffing, but we had to take a hard look at how we were going to fund that staffing. So we're looking to reallocate, look at various levers, look at retirements, rewiring positions, shifting some roles as we move forward in the budget process to offset the staffing increases. So we essentially come in at a flat level on staffing. So that's one of the buckets. The other is the health insurance reserves, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. I have a, a whole slide on that. Amy talked about the fact that we're self-insured. We have an internal service fund to fund the claims, and I'll give a little bit of the financial backing on the health of that and our ability to use some of those reserve levels to offset our operating costs. Not a situation we were in two or three years ago, we're in a fortunate situation now. You can make those adjustments, they don't impact student programming, they don't impact staffing levels, and you can move the needle a little bit, which is an important thing to recognize. And just some other small levers there, we got some even better insurance information. So it's like the luck year on the insurance a little bit, where last year was a pretty tough year on insurance, so. That's kind of the macro level of where we're headed. So wanted to do a couple of quick hit-slides on return on investment before we got into the real, real numbers. So again, we like to align our budget work and align our presentations with the Board of Education goals so that one goal on student growth and success, we have a myriad of measures we share with the board in reports throughout the year. I pulled just a couple to talk through. So on the far left of that slide where it says 2023 ESPA grades three through six, this is essentially taking all of our students in grades three through six, language arts and math, rolling all their performance up into one kind of metric and saying, how do we compare in terms of percentage of students in our DURG that meet the goal level? All right, so as you can see, we're in top four in the DURG, always, always room for improvement. But again, from a market position, good things to celebrate. We've shared the fact that we've seen that math performance grow in recent years and hope to see that trend continue. That's something that the board's really been talking to us about and something that I feel like we're moving in the right direction on. But familiar districts up there that we talk about on an annual basis. The middle piece is the U.S. News and World Report Top High School Ranking, that comes out on an annual basis. That's something that fluctuates, it's something that people in the community do pay attention to. I'll get calls on it and, and we'll have conversations on how that number fluctuates. So when you look at our DURG, we are the fourth-rated high school in our DURG in the state of Connecticut, and I think we were 15th, 15th overall in the state. It's a number that's kind of fluctuated over the past five years from a high of eight to, I think, 15. And we'll, we'll continue to monitor that. But again, with 169 districts, we have a lot to offer at Simsbury High School and a lot to be proud of. And then to the far left is the Science Standardized Test Score, a real testament to our kids, our staff, the alignment of our curriculum with the state test, and the fact that from a state standpoint, two years ago we were number one, we fall in second. But, I mean, you can see these rank, these rankings are, they're within a percent, right? So you don't want to get too, too celebratory and crazy about it. But just a snapshot in terms of how we look in overall achievement level. When we think about the Board of Education goal on sustainable, sustainable and strategic investments, I thought it was important to put some Latimer pictures up on the board and show some visuals of what's going to be a beautiful facility. I know Neil's given us regular updates on that. And not too many years ago, we finished a really nice renovation at Henry James Middle School. So in the past, you know, eight years, the town has invested significantly in large-scale capital projects. Our challenge has been the dollars to maintain smaller things along the way that we'll, we'll need to continue to advocate for. And like I said, a lot of conversations in the future on what is the next large priority of the Board of Education for our, our facilities, but certainly been a focus area. The other two visuals are pieces I just took from our annual report. We talk a lot about the investments in our district, it's a people business. And I think that pie chart, pie chart demonstrates roughly 80% of that pie are benefits and salaries of our staff, right? So that, that does make it challenging when we do need to move the needle on the number. The way to move the needle significantly is to have, have those conversations. So bottom right, I just wanted to put out there in terms of what this board has supported our administration within the last two budget cycles. We've, we've put forward significant resources in staffing and in special education, and we have more to talk about this year. But it does tell a narrative that this board is paying attention to what the administrative, administration has advocated for, what the staffs have advocated for, and we certainly appreciate that. It's been the two, you know, to the tune of over 13 FTE and $1.3 million over two years. So significant, significant dollars in commitment. And then we always, you know, Josh talked about the vision of the graduate earlier, and we're excited about getting that video released, but we have to remember why we're here, right? We're here for the students. We need to prepare our students and support them on their journey, their K-12 journey to prepare them, you know, for the workforce, to compare them for, prepare them for colleges when they leave us. So just showed some photos of some of our programming, and we've talked at the board level really what separates our district and we're most proud of are the avenues we have for our students to find areas of passion, find elective opportunities, and really excel in those opportunities. So from our comprehensive athletic programs to our revitalized culinary programs, our technology and engineering programs, and our programs in the arts, really a robust program at Simsbury High School that I would compare with anybody's program in the country, let alone Connecticut. So that is framing it, and now I can go through the numbers, all right? So this is a very similar format that we carry on when, when we start. I'm just going to grab a little sip there. And we looked at it, at the workshop. So this first page is really a fixed cost look at our contractual obligations. And when I say that we're a people business, when you look at this number totaling $2.7 million, the majority of it having to do with the teacher's contract through the educational steps, through what the, the contract cost is, rolling it over into the new year. Those first three line items on that slide are about a 2.5% increase to the overall operating cost. When you add in the other contracts, it's a 3.33% increase. So it's like right at that COLA number for the cost of what our contracts look like. And it's actually 70% of the entire budget we're moving forward in terms of cost increase. So you know, you look at the pie chart, how the pie chart sets, it stays pretty consistent throughout. The next category we talked to the board about in our presentation are some of these market-driven increases. So transportation on this slide being the biggest piece of the puzzle. This is special education transportation. This is really that struggle I had talked about with third-party transportation. The fact that Salters is at capacity with what they can do right now, based on availability of drivers, based on the number of their vans, and some of these special educational runs, we need to, we need to cost out to third-party vendors in a market that's not really beneficial for us to do so. So these are like live bills that we have to pay, and then we need to commit to looking at this differently in the future to try to improve on that, and we are currently in that, in that process right now, kind of looking at our own preschool operation, seeing what we can do to stagger runs a little bit differently and improve in this area. But a real challenge, not only for our district, but the other districts as well, and it makes up over half of what we see here. Utilities is a fixed cost that we look at with the town. Tom Roy does a great job going out contracting those costs on an annual basis. Those are the two biggest drivers here. In our workshop, we talked about the cost of software being up, supplies, textbooks being up. The main component of that textbook, textbook piece is the new math program.
That's correct.
So that's kind of a one-shot upward drive of about $70,000 that we'll be able to kind of relook and sustain in our operating costs next year. But another 0.95% increase on top of what we just talked about with our contractual costs. And the other big piece that we laid out in the next slide here is, is, you know, our current year challenges. And our current year challenges in special education are really in two buckets, two main buckets that we've lumped into one line, line item. It's the tuition costs, so those are students that are receiving their education due to their needs at, at schools other than the Simsbury Public Schools. It's like 40 students in total. It's a number that stabilized from last year to this year. You'll recall, we saw a spike in that tuition number over the last couple of years. It stabilized in terms of number of students. It did not stabilize in cost because where we went and had a deficit last year of about a half a million dollars in that line item, we were supported in our budget to increase that line item a half a million. Our costs on the outside increased between 11 and 14%, and we've moved that deficit to a new year. So it's really a long-term challenge that we really need to grapple with in terms of creating robust programs in district, which some of our staffing needs this year will help us do, potentially looking at partnerships with other districts to offset these costs. But between the tuition costs and what we call contracted services, which are almost arm-in-arm, contracted services are when we go out to third parties to pay for avowals because we're at capacity. We may need to hire part-time staffing or even full-time staffing for a year from a third party. So between those two line items, which are all kind of related to the same overall picture and how we analyze our costs, it's about $848,000 to create a sustainable situation there. The health insurance, now this was more positive news. You can see the increase of $182,000 in that line item. That's an improvement from when we were at the, at the workshop. The workshop number was about $322,000, I believe, as an increase. So we got even better news on the recommendation there, which is, is really positive in light of some of these other escalated costs. There's some other smaller cost increases here. We don't want to create a cliff with our open-choice funding, a little bit of a smaller grant appropriation this year. So we need to move back into operating this year to ensure that we don't incur more debt there. Amy's really holding me to those things, just so you know, she doesn't like me to create cliffs. The social emotional learning. The social emotion, uh, learning curriculum that Sue had talked about earlier, that's kind of a one-time cost, I believe, that bumps up about $37,000 for that program, everyday speech, and then some miscellaneous costs to round out another half percent increase or about $400,000 or so. All right, so there's three pieces left to this puzzle to talk about. And I put back before the board tonight the staffing requests that we've moved forward. So we've divided them in two categories, regular education staffing requests and the staffing request that Katie Crisula came out to discuss to us in a larger report. The regular ed staffing requests are very minimal. They're enrollment-related, they're 2.2, are basically one class section increases in elementary strings and in our sign language course at the, at the secondary level, which is, is really taken off, which is cool to see. And then the larger increases in our overall programming to special education. So, you know, it's interesting, as I've worked through this and, and talking about our program, Sharon and I had a, I thought it was a good conversation the other day, Sharon, just about, you know, you try to assess the overall magnitude of what we're asking for in special education. But in reality, it's two areas, right? It's the buckets I just talked about on the prior slide, and then there's things that are related to enrollment. So, you know, the two teachers of our intensive learning needs program, strictly enrollment-related. We have programs in place, we've seen an expansion in students moving from other districts into our district, and we need to respond, right? We need to respond, as we've talked about with the intensive learning needs program. It's a real stressor, in, in full transparency right now, to all parties. And I think it's fair to say, right? It's, it's a stressor even to the students in terms of confines in space. We've really worked on our space and trying to separate kids in, in, in more appropriate spaces due to, you know, our limited space in the building. It's a stressor to the teachers because the caseloads have risen to a place that we know we're not comfortable with in terms of service delivery. It's a stressor to the parents because when that happens, communication isn't as prompt. You're worried about service delivery.
Right.
You're worried about safety, you know, with these types of students. So I think we've really done a deep dive into that program, we've included a lot of stakeholders. This year, Sue and I have actually been on, on conversations, which wasn't meant to be part of the budget process, but as part of these listening tours, and we took special ed up as the, the topic. Themes are common, you know what I mean? Their themes are common, they're what you've heard about. There are real needs out there that we need to address so that our teachers can feel supported and feel as competent as they can when they deliver their service. Our parents can feel supportive and our kids can thrive. So those are really the things we're thinking about with these positions. But two teaching positions in that program, one at Squadron Line School, one at Tooten Hill School, a program coordinator position. This is the one position that is being recommended that's not student-facing, and we've really looked at making sure that the resources we put in place this year are resources that are going to work with students. But we have a void in this program in terms of the magnitude of the program, the intensity of the program, and the need to have an individual that has expertise in these skills really managing that program. And I think we will see improvements in communication, service delivery. This will be a, a conduit for both our non-certified and certified staff when they have challenges in the professional development. There's a void that we created when Janet Haley left the district in her retirement, and we made a good faith effort to, you know, reallocate and rewire things in a different way. And this program has grown to such a point across two programs that I think it, it really needs a, a relook. So I'm a strong advocate, I think, as you know, of that position. The other two positions that we have there are enrollment-related, right? They're need-related, the preschool, the special ed teacher at Simsbury High, and we've talked about a reading specialist at Simsbury High School, which I think we can do, I'll talk about in a little bit, with current staffing levels, but by rewiring other positions in the district to meet those needs, and I know we've had ongoing conversations with, with Mr. Baker about that and Betsy Gonzalez and our reading people, and really trying to be thoughtful about our approach moving forward. But it's a substantial ask, over six, you know, $700,000 in that area. But I think all very appropriate, which is why we're trying to come up with creative ways to look at doing things differently because we do understand that resources are limited to some extent, and you can't continue to layer on to what you currently have and think that that's the answer to things. You have to think differently a little bit, so we're trying, really trying to look at that. So when we think through the, the reallocation or the reduction piece of this budget, and we talked through this last year as well, our thoughts to date are the Internal Service Fund is a big piece of the puzzle, it really is. So the Internal Service Fund, a policy was passed, I think, two years ago, two, three years ago, about reserve levels. Like, we should keep our reserve levels in that fund between 20 and 25% of what our expected claims are. That's the advice we get from Lockton, who's our advisor. It's advi, it's advice that, it's kind of like guardrails, right? You can't really go outside of those guardrails when things get tough because you're just going to create holes for yourself and challenges for yourself later. The good news is, we're at 31% in that fund. So after a couple of tough years, claims are in, in a very good position. We have very healthy reserves. So our recommendation is that we take $650,000 to offset not only our insurance piece of the puzzle, but create some flexibility in our operating room. I'm not going to speak for the Board of Selectmen side, but I know they've asked Amy to look into that same kind of rationale on their side of the budget. So it'll be something consistent, I think, across the two boards, meaning the Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So the 650, what does that bring, the percent of the reserves?
Same question.
It's actually only a portion of the percent. I think by the end of the fiscal year, I estimate it would be about 36%. And for the policy, we should be at 20 to 25%, but if we're going to use reserves, we should only use a portion. So I believe that's about one-third, so I think we'd still be around that. So I think we'd still be around that twenty-five to thirty percent.
Still pretty healthy. Good question. So that's one piece of the puzzle that moves the needle significantly. Two other pieces that we were having early conversation about. We have a little flexibility in our IDEA grant, which is our special education grant. So we would move one of these positions to the grant so to alleviate burden from the operating costs. You'd be able to take the value of that cost away. And we would look at repurposing a current vacancy, which is a retirement, into a new position to meet the needs that have been identified for the reading position at Henry James. And I think we have a lot of good people, we've received a lot of input there, and I think we'll be successful in how we look at that. That was part of my conversation a couple of board meetings ago when we were talking about the reading, right? This board committed, some members of this board, were on the board at the time, to a significant kind of commitment to certified reading teachers to help with our intervention programs, assist with some of our reading needs in special ed. We're really taking a look at that entire pool of resources in terms of how we look at prioritizing who gets that expertise and making some shifts that we'll be looking forward to talking to the board about. But we are resourced pretty well in that area. It's just a matter of what priorities and where those resources go.
So I have a question about the IDEA grant.
Sure.
Understanding that, you know, what you're trying to do, but what are we replacing?
Good question. So the way that grant works, not to get too funky about it, there's overlap. So we receive the grant, it's like a two-year grant, and then you receive the second grant before the first grant is kind of out. So you can build in what you almost call carryover. You can build in a little cushion in those grants. We had taken that cushion up in past years due to some of the deficits in allocating. So with the new grant coming in, we do have a little more flexibility now. So it's not taken away, it's kind of just putting it towards a flex zone that we do have.
And so then going forward, like next year?
We would hope to keep it on the grant. But we'll continue to analyze that, and if it changes, we'll come back and talk about it. Right? So on the IDEA grant, I think, I don't have that page in front of me. I think we have eleven or twelve full-time equivalent positions funded on that grant. Yeah, yeah. How many are there? Is it, it's quite a few.
Yeah, it's like.
Fourteen?
Part B is fifteen point five.
Yeah. The last piece of the puzzle is really looking at the remainder of the dollars, which is about five hundred and eighty thousand, and saying, what non-classroom teaching positions? So we're kind of setting our priority list of, we don't want to initiate any reallocation of resources or any reduction of resources with student-facing resources first, right? So I don't want to initiate reallocating dollars by going to the second-grade classroom, taking three positions and saying, hey, we're at twenty-five kids in second grade, right? I think we need to look at other positions. We have a group of positions in our district, just to name some of them, and it's not to target these positions because I don't want to get too specific with it tonight. But, you know, coaches, people that support technology, transition services, language arts consultants. We don't have a ton of them anymore because of past budgets and what we've done. But we have a pool of resources that primary objective is not to work individually with students, it's to support adults, either in professional development, coaching, or various ways that way. So we would look to repurpose that dollar amount of positions there. It's somewhere between four and five FTE as we continue to move through the budget process to bring that number down and feel that we can do that without significant alterations to student programming. It won't be easy because you're modifying things. But at this point of the budget process, for those of us that have been through it, and I still need to go and present to the Board of Finance, and we don't know what the direction will be from the Board of Finance. If there's going to be a situation where we reduce staff and we need to talk specifically about positions, I think we've learned that the best way to do that is do that at once in terms of getting that information out there. It does create angst, it does create concern. But we've had conversations, we've had some conversations with our administrators about the direction we'd like to go in here and feel that we can do it to get that number below five percent and to kind of carry out, I don't want to call it a mission, but the feedback of the board that we need to continue to find ways to look at our overall FTE number, which is substantial, right? We are an organization of eight hundred employees and say, can we find room within that eight hundred to reallocate five? And I feel pretty confident that we can do that. And we can have more conversation on that in the future, but that's kind of the level of specifics.
I think when you say coaches, Sue, to be clear, that it's educational coaches. It's math and science, it's.
That's the group.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the group. Thank you, Tara. So those reductions total about 1.4, and you take that insurance reduction that took it from the three percent to the one percent that was on the prior slide, and that's really where you get to that 1.6 million overall. And then when you roll it into its most simplistic form on the last slide, summary of the main drivers, you look at our contractual obligations of an increase of 3.3%. You put forward all those staffing requests, it's about a 0.8% increase. The market-driven increases we talked about, special education needs and prior-year deficits, the insurance piece of the puzzle, and then you take away the offsets. That's how you get, in a nutshell, to that 4.97% increase, which again, higher than your five-year average of budgets, higher than your ten-year average of budgets, really in the market of where other districts are right now with the challenges that people are seeing. So that is the overall budget. I have one more concept to share. I don't know if, you want me to share that first?
Yeah, let's.
Okay, alright. Yep. So another piece that we talked about, and I thought I had really good conversation about at the workshop, is our CNR, our capital non-recurring. So this is the historical count, it's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar line item in our operating budget. We also fund the purchase of two buses on an annual basis from that line item. It's been a fixed-line item for as long as anybody can remember, so over twenty to twenty-five years. And it's creating challenges now as our needs in the building continue to mount, right? So we have large capital projects, and we have capital projects under 250,000 that fall under CNR. So Jason, over the last two years, with the help of Amy and Melissa, has really put together a plan of, is there a way to increase the funding? To allow us to get at some of these projects on a regular basis, get more current with things. As we said, of all the things that actually frustrate our building administrators and our principals are the fact that they can't get ahead of some of these building needs that would make their work environments look better, feel better, and be more functionable, whether it's bathrooms, whether it's carpeting, whether it's flooring, right? So we've talked about these challenges, I think, pretty significantly. So this would be a discussion item to increase that 500,000 by 700,000 in the line item, but do it in a way that it's already currently constructed, which is on a, and Amy can get into this if you have questions on. It's a buyback plan with the Board of Finance. So it's already a construct that's in place where you only pay a fifth of that on an annual basis. So that 700,000 dollar increase to our ability to get that cash for capital only would cost us 140,000 dollars annually. So it's like short-term, you know, bite for what would be a long-term gain in terms of Jason's ability to manage, Melissa's feedback with the principals, and what principals are feeling in terms of getting things done. So when you look at that, it would increase the overall budget that I put forward to about 5.1%. Amy put together an interesting bullet here. It's like an estimated impact to the taxpayer of 12 to 19 dollars a year, a dollar a month. So again, Board of Finance puts things in those terms sometimes. It's an interesting way to look at. It's not just our decision, though. That's why this sits on the outside. We can say we would like to have this happen, but it is a Board of Finance funding mechanism. They mentioned at the tri-board, they weren't interested at this point because of the challenges in moving forward with this. But I thought we had a robust conversation at the workshop, and it's interesting in terms of a lever in Amy's ideas of making this part of the puzzle. And I would at least like to bring it to the Board of Finance for their consideration when I move forward my presentation in a couple of weeks, but wanted to get your input and thoughts on that as a board. So with that, I'll stop talking.
Take another sip.
Well, let me kick it off then, to give you a second here. First, I just wanted to thank you guys. This is obviously a really arduous process every year, and the work and the effort you do to get us into a responsible budgeting situation is very commendable. And I know it takes a lot of hours, a lot of angst. So first, let me just say, I appreciate it. And as you guys know, that's always a comment to question with me, right? So, well, maybe another comment. If we included the CNRs, here's my two cents of it, right? That gets our budget to 5.15. If you guys go back to the slide that compares us to the other superintendent's budgets, that really doesn't even move us in the sense that, sure, it puts us above Avon, but that still puts us fifth of those eight towns. So it still is a very respectable, very responsible budgetary presentation and ask if we went in that direction as well, so.
Okay.
My two cents. Let me just open it up. Any questions? Anybody?
Yeah, so I have one. So, thank you, Matt. We received this, I guess, before we opened up. What's our expectation for tonight? Is it, you're looking for us to?
So there's no vote tonight?
That's what.
No vote tonight on the budget. So this is your opportunity to kind of listen to how we've packaged this all together. So it's a point in time. We have a week before we pull back together. So it would also be an opportunity if the board wanted to see any other information, have us pull any data together. We can re-present that at the next board meeting. Timeline-wise, because we felt like we needed a little more time from the workshop to this, we're up against it a little bit because, I think, is it March 4th? I go to the, March 5th, we present to the Board of Finance. So we actually have to vote on a budget number at that next meeting. But that meeting is, has a brief presentation because it's at Squadron from Squadron, and it's wide open for however we want to utilize that time for this. So if that helps to frame it. And we can answer any questions people have tonight. If we don't have them, we'll just bring it, we'll pull it for the next meeting.
And the question was asked because I know we have new folks.
Yeah.
So I wanted folks to understand.
So, just some initial thoughts. To me, I agree with your sentiment because I did the exact same thing on the exact same slide. It's a no-brainer to move the CNR up, given that it's been the same for thirty-plus years or twenty-plus years. But can you remind me what the Board of Finance's hesitation was to do that?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for them. I just, I think.
Your recollection of it?
Yeah, when we got together at that point in time, when they're looking at the projections on the grand list, you're looking at coming off a year where we had a revow, we, as a Board of Ed, had a significant budget increase. I think just managing all of the levers and leverage points, it might have felt like it was just one more thing that only increases, right? So, and I think there's a conversation, a little bit philosophically, of how do you fund that mechanism? And I don't want to get too much into the specifics of that. Do you have to front all that cash or create an appropriation for all that cash or not? So that's the kind of conversation that Amy has with the Board of Finance in, hey, if you're in agreement of this, what's the best way to do it? I think our role on that is kind of what the comments have been. Wow, for a limited hit to the operating costs, you free up significant funds for priorities for buildings to occur and for us to be able to move on stuff in a way we just have not been able to do. And I would say this, like, my team has done more reprioritization in areas of urgent need. I feel like those exercises are up. You know, I'm always one to go back to the drawing board and look at things. But when you're at eight or nine percent of funding your urgent number-one percent priorities done by TechTons in a study, you've got to start thinking about structures and systems and how are we supporting that? And our structure and system doesn't support the ability to improve, it just doesn't, right? So unless we can collectively change that, we're going to be in the same wheel on it.
So can I just build on those, I guess, really those two questions then? So going forward, do you see, do you see this question resolved before we go before the Board of Finance?
I don't.
Or do you present it?
I think it should be part of the presentation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't want to speak for you, but.
After the budget workshop, Lisa and I chatted, and she is open to the discussion. And I did go back and watch the tri-board, and it was not hard, no. It's just they wanted the plan, right? It's just different than what I've done. So they are open to it. I think it's going to come down to the dollars and what they're comfortable with. But because you get so much bang for your buck, that's why I've really been pushing, like, Matthew, like, please include this, please include this, because the dollar impact for 12 dollars a year to be able to get some relief in our schools. I know Scott's here, I can't tell you how many times he's asked for classroom furniture. We're like, no, 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 your buddies are. Like, we'd really like to be able to give back, that's to put back into their schools. So this is just one way to do it where you're getting a lot bang for your buck.
Yeah, let me ask it a sort of different way then. With the Board of Finance, do you see it, see us presenting it like you did here, you know, 497?
I think so.
With a 515?
I think because it's a.
Here's 515, if you agree. Maybe it's semantics, but I.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about that. I think it can go either way. I think the other piece on it that's interesting, you know, small investment for a big bang on the buck down the road. The good thing about the construct of the buyback and why it was put in place historically, and I remember as a new superintendent being kind of taught up on this, is they did the buyback so we couldn't cut it, right? Because if I go and look at that 500,000-dollar line item in a tough year and I say, you know what, I don't want to touch staff, we can do without for a year. We don't get the 500,000 dollar credit, you only get a fifth of it. So, you know what I mean? It is actually a really good construct, it just hasn't grown over time.
Question about the tax implications of a dollar a month. Is that, I just want to make sure I understand it. Is that going from 4.97 to 5.15, the 140,000 dollar increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on that, a question.
Yeah.
So I know you split them out. I'm just curious here. So what everyone said, I agree. I think that's the slide that stands out, right? So a few things there. Even at 515, right, Farmington's ahead of us, and they're the only one lower than us on peer communities, right? So we could be low there, right? We're below the average on everything in here, right, rank and Hartford and all that. And yet our scores are very high, right? So I feel like you can do the 497 to 515 however. But if we feel strongly that the 515 is the number we believe in and has value, does it make sense to just go in there with a 515? Because I feel like, and just say it, right, it almost makes it too easy to take that out if someone's looking for something to, like, pick at, right? Like, we were at like a, you know, seven number, you've brought it down to five. 497, 515 feels very similar. And it seems like the relief and the bang for the buck we get for that, I mean, it just feels like if we believe in that number, why don't we just put that number forward and not like have it out there as a, oh, and this would be nice too?
No, I'm fine with that. I just, we separated it out just because it needs that last conversation point with them. But there's nothing that keeps us from saying, no, we need, you know, it's a line item in our budget. We need to find a way to fund this in a different way.
I feel like that's.
Okay.
I mean, if anyone disagrees, but I feel like it just feels like everyone here feels strongly on that. So let's just make it part of our ask.
I agree completely.
So I have, I have a question, but like, I'm getting totally off this. Everyone's focused on that last number. I have a detailed question.
Yes.
On the reductions in reallocation.
Yeah.
On those six that we are repurposing adult-facing positions, are you at all concerned, or we're now actually looking at Sue or Matt? Like, I'm assuming the reason. I'm assuming the reason, and this is my assumption first. Am I correct to assume that the reason why we do not have an ILN coordinator? Is because maybe we repurposed this position years ago? And if that's correct, now we're putting it back. So are we continuing, are we setting ourselves up to just be asking for this next year?
So. Not necessarily, but it could be a challenge, right? I, I'll be honest with you. I don't feel we're staffed overall in a place where I would say, oh, we have an individual in this function. Or a, a coach in that function that's not aligned with our priorities and is not working to their focal capacity, right? The position of the coordinator, just to be clear, and I, I know exactly what you're getting at, because I referenced it too. It's not like a repeat of, of what we had. We're really trying to look at it differently. Uh, some of why we didn't go back in that direction when we did it is because Katie Crisula at the time. And you'll remember, really wanted to look at it, a different model with department supervisors. Um, at, at the building level. And we ended up eliminating an administrative job up here, rewiring it down there. So we were really trying to take a look at the, at, at the whole thing. We may have been okay if we haven't seen such program growth here.
Exactly.
I mean, again, you almost doubled the size of the program within, within a year. It's just like. Um, and with the, with the meetings, the advocacy, the, the dollars that go with it. But, and it's a good question. You, you know what I mean? I'm not.
And what I've been around to is back to, and I have no idea how every, I am solely talking for myself here. Because I have no idea how everyone else feels, but it's, it's been around to is that, you know. Are we just cutting off more than we can chew and then next year? And so maybe we need to go to the Board of Finance and say, no, we need to really be at six. Or because it's hard to say what those six positions, and I don't want to say here specifically what those six positions are that you're looking at. But like, what is, you know what I'm saying? Do, should we be pushing back to say, no, we can't go down to five point one five?
I mean, the question is, like, what's the?
Question, or is that just?
I don't know. I am putting it out there.
The question you're, you're getting to is, what is the impact to, to the rest of the student body? To lose these six full-time student, uh, employees to fund the special ed, six full-time people we need?
So I think there will be a time in this process, and it will be after the Board of Finance meeting when we know the totality of where this number needs to be. That we will put a list together. It will have impact statements, uh, and we'll be able to go through that.
So that happens after decisions are made?
I mean.
Well, you don't want to get into it now.
I would say if there's a desire, if there's a desire to have some more information at the next meeting, we can, we can do that. Um, I would say in good faith, I wouldn't create a scenario that I feel would undermine what we're doing. You, you know, I, I feel we have to put forward a budget that is responsible, but really advocates for the overall needs. But I also believe, um, as other districts are going through, the needs are changing. Structures and systems need to change and we need to think innovatively. And we have had challenges before where we kind of layer up. And I think it creates some issues with coherence. It creates issues with communication. Uh, when you have, you know, too many pieces managing smaller, smaller chunks. And so we're pushing each other to think about that a little bit. I know I'm talking in broad terms, but, um. Again, the scope of the operation, the limited number of positions we're talking about, things would have an impact, but I would feel. Still, it's a responsible budget of what we've put forward at that number, but I think they're, they're good questions to, and good things to wrestle with.
Always trying to be more efficient.
And then, on that note, two things that I was thinking is that, um. Well, one first, on the, you mentioned it, so I'm gonna ask, to ask you more on it. Is the, I recall last year, we weren't able, I thought we didn't do the buses or a bus. Because we didn't have the funds, right? And if we didn't do the bus last year. Where did that, that money went to other infrastructure, right? Because that's that. And so it went to other infrastructure stuff. And so this year, if we don't get this. Or we do get this, are we guaranteed to then use that, some of that for the bus? Like, because don't we still have a bus issue?
So, so I want to go back to that question, um, around the bus. And Matt, you and I have talked about what kind of bus, but that's not really my issue. It's, um, are we getting the bus? Because of, we buy a bus every so many years and we put it off. Or, because I keep hearing that people are not, you know, parents are not using the buses as much. And, you know, the fuss is about, of Simsberry High School, it, you know, it's, it's a, I don't want to say a mess, but, you know. So, so that's my, yeah, but it is, but it's stressed. And I guess people are saying it's a mess. But do we, what's driving it for this year? Is it really?
It's replacement.
Aging fleet.
Yeah, we have a replacement.
Really aging fleet of buses.
And to your point on that.
But we have an aging fleet, but do we have occupancy is what I'm really getting at.
I mean, I could pull something together for you on that. I mean, it's, uh, we do ridership counts on certain days of the year. But that is, I mean, I could tell you, um, you know. Morning is more than afternoon with, um, the high school, but, you know, still. Um, because there's after school activities. So high school kids stay at Simsberry High School. However, there's also way too many people who drop off their kid in the morning. Creating some of the traffic that.
But I would be curious then, that I would ask.
But the elementary buses are heavily used.
And that I will, I, I mean, because I'm behind them sometimes when I'm out early and I can see that, you know what I mean? Um, but I just didn't know, um, if the drop at the high school. You know, kind of balanced it that we could pull back, you know?
I mean, we cut back two last year. We cut back two, so we went from twenty eight to twenty six. And you gotta go from the center of town at Salters Express Lot. To every corner of Simsberry all at the same time. So, I mean, I don't know how much below twenty six you could go, but we looked at it literally last summer. And made some pretty late changes in August. Laura Schellman is still mad at me. Um, but we, we, we did make a two bus efficiency pretty late in the summer.
The backend of the challenge there is you can take a twenty minute ride and all of a sudden it's a.
Right, so anecdote.
And now that's leading to more people getting picked up.
Correct. And now the high school has middle and elementary in, on it, or middle and high school. But part of what the efficiency of removing those buses did is my son's bus rides like forty minutes. And it, in early start time for teenagers, I drive him to school. Because he can get an extra thirty minutes of sleep. If I do that. And that's critical sleep. So we have to be careful about pulling back too much on the buses, because it really impacts. And I think part of what you're seeing, why there are so many people dropping off is precisely that. It's too long of a bus ride.
Yeah, I've, I've had the discussion with the people are asking, I'm like, why are you changing? And, and the only reason I was saying that is that if we saw ridership was really down, we don't want to get a new bus and then there's nobody in it.
Ridership is not, I mean, I was out there from the morning and in the afternoon. That's why I would like to see, because everyone sort of always jokes like. Oh, parents in Simsberry dropping their kids off. But really? I would be curious, because those buses look packed and those are big kids.
There's a day in the fall, once everything is settled, that Salter picks it and does an exact count. And I can get ridership counts for you if you're interested in saying it.
We can do that.
But Neil, is there much correlation between ridership and just aging fleet? Maybe I'm right, like, it's like, the bus is gonna drive, it's gonna leave, it's gonna come back, it's gonna put miles on the tires. There's gonna be mileage on the odometer. Regardless of how many kids are on the bus, the bus is getting older, the bus is driving, right? So I think, I don't know how much ridership.
They were really old. It's not like it's, you know.
The buses need seat belts, like the newer buses have seat belts on them, the older ones don't.
Right, I had to ask Matt that same question. When we look at what we're getting, you know, are we getting current day? You know, like, and, and Matt has heard me say this, my, um, cameras. I, I personally think cameras need to be on the buses because of stuff that's happening. And so, and seat belts, like you said. And so, you know, I'm okay. We don't have to get a Volkswagen.
Just like with your own car, JR will ask me. Like, here's a repair we're gonna make. Do you want to put a six thousand dollar repair into this bus? And I usually say to Amy, can I put six thousand dollars? Bus, because we're, you know, we're gonna try to make it last two more years. And, um, you know, but he, he is very responsible about asking us. But, I mean, and I think it was in your budget pack and all that. But we keep the fleet and a number of them are over ten years of age.
That was in there. And, and, and I'm assuming, just like in our car, JR gets the extended warranty.
And the undercoat.
Are these, and I, the special ed staffing, are any of those mandated? I mean, are those, are those, are those filling positions that our students need by?
Yeah, I mean, I guess how you define that, right? So these are students that have individual educational plans, which we legally need to fulfill. And it's a specialized program, which is built on a certain staffing model.
So there's a volume and an intensity associated with their service hours as defined in their IEP.
No, the state will look at this. These are things we have to.
We are obligated to fulfill those hours.
And we have to report back to the state that we have done so.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's something that we can't forget. It's, it's, you know, these aren't really questionable. These are important.
Kind of, like I said, it's. To enrollment, it's related to. Needs that are already defined.
So then, so I have a question then around that, because we're saying that, you know, Matt, you were saying, you know, we've had folks move in. Our needs have increased, right? And so. I don't know how you do this, but I'm just gonna ask a question. How do we know, I mean, what breaks this number? If next year, we end up getting X amount, are we gonna have to come back and say, we need more? Because this goes back to, you remember when, when Katie was presented to us, right? And she said, um, from a, from a teacher's standpoint, or, you know. There, the number of hours have increased. Remember? And she went through that whole thing. And so, is this to accommodate, you know, I hate to say, you know, my world, a hundred extra hours? That's what's justifying the new teacher. Next year, we end up getting another influx, not because of the apartments that everybody's fighting. But, you know, are we, bottom line is, are we gonna be back here? How do we know that this?
So this, this is, you know, I'll be honest with you, these teaching positions. I would equate it to if you were funding an enrollment increase in second grade. And I can only answer that question by saying, if the overall enrollment continues to increase. We need to have conversations on how to staff it appropriately. This is not staffed with a whole bunch of breathing room for potential move-ins. This is staffed appropriately to the program.
To respond to what's here.
Now, what we'll have to see is, was that growth in that program a significant outlier or not? We've never seen growth like that before. So, I mean, that will be a conversation we'll have to monitor throughout the summer with what we see and, and, and come back and talk about. But what it does is, I think it, it, it bodifies our program. Allows our program to be stronger in-house, which hopefully eliminates some of the need to go out of house. Which is a market that we don't have a great deal of control on.
So Katie presented that slide where it was, um, unexpected move-ins for the ILN. It was like one.
One, five, eleven.
In January. And I know when we spoke, it had moved up early February. Where are we now with the unexpected move-ins?
We are still at eleven.
Still at eleven, okay. I thought it moved up.
We had, we were pretty confident that one was coming, so we knew it was going to be eleven. And it stayed firm there.
And there's, I mean, obviously no way to anticipate whether that exponential growth is gonna continue.
No. It's something that we continue to watch very closely, but we don't know. Those were truly unexpected move-ins. And when a student moves to your district, you are obligated to accept that IEP as written, even if it wasn't written by you.
Okay, uh, uh, can I second or maybe ask a different, similar question, but slightly different? So I get, I mean, by definition, they're unexpected, right? But, um, typically or, or historically, have we seen families move in at the later part of the year?
Oh, that's a good question.
Jump again, right?
Maybe one offs, Jeff, but I would say the, the number that we see happens over the summer months, right? Because people want to kind of finish out where they are in that moment. That's typically more of the trend that we would see.
It's immigration data we, we keep on an annual basis.
So if we're at eleven now, maybe you get one or two, probably not, but it's not much more than that.
That's my hesitancy. It's, it's really tough to predict. And I could say, yes, usually this is what we see. And then we get new enrollments tomorrow, right? So it's hard to say.
So with this addition of six teachers, how much flex do we have for unexpected enrollment next year?
Not a great deal.
Not a great deal. So maybe we, if we get one or two or three students, we're probably already stressed again.
I mean, I think, well, I think we'd be okay there. I think, I think that, like, if you go back to a more normalized trend of. This type of student profile, one to three, it'd be okay. I mean, we'd have an increase. You can adjust some of the non-certified staffing. We have more flexibility to do that. You know, I, I would compare it to a regular classroom teaching position or a special ed teacher's caseload, right? I mean, we don't staff in a way, because it just, it's not responsible either, because the dollars are huge. Each position's a hundred thousand dollars of. Hey, I'm gonna add this teaching position. It's a, a, just a case contingency. But, you know, Amy and I have talked o- over the years, it's the biggest challenge is. We budget to what those kind of expenditures are. And outside of our non-lapsing account, uh, we don't have a flexo. Uh, we can use that, but we've utilized that for different things over the course of the year. So that's kind of, um. Used up in a, in a sense. So it's, it's, it's a real challenge and it's, it's hard to predict, you know? And it's not a level of frustration, but to be able to respond in real time to what our real needs. Are challenges for school districts when we don't draw revenue.
I think Brian's been trying to get it here.
I just wanted to say, like, you know, in my mind, like, four point nine seven, right? Or is, was where you came in at. Sixty-seven percent of that four point nine seven is contractual obligations. Two thirds of it. So we can talk about bus or student. I mean, at the end of the day, we're, it's the small numbers that we're talking about that try to move the needle. But the bigger numbers are flat and fixed. So, and, and as someone who's heavily involved in those contract discussions. I think what you put forward is very good. I mean, you've spent months looking at it. I think we've all had multiple presentations over the last several weeks and months. So I'm very comfortable with where we're at. You know, I, I mentioned this before, that, you know, as we're all Simsberry, most of us are Simsberry, well, on the board, we're all Simsberry residents. And, you know, this is a, a big deal to us. And I think it's fantastic. Times are tough. It, it, I mean, it's, everyone's feeling it.
Yeah, I appreciate you gra- regrounding us in the.
I think.
The amount of the fixed costs are, are what they're doing. So I appreciate that.
That's really good. I would just like to say, we are so proud of our teachers and we're so lucky to have them. And we are in a time where teachers are, are true and far between. And we're, I think we want, we don't want to ever put this on their backs by any reason. In any way.
They earned.
They, yes, absolutely. They were, they were, they were kind in their negotiations.
The one great thing about going out on an annual basis and meeting with groups at each building on these listening tours with some questions, they're so passionate. But I mean that in the best of ways. I mean, they want what is best for the kids. They advocate for those needs. Um, and then they expect us to, to move that forward and wrestle. And then they expect us to, to move that forward and wrestle with it the best we can. I have to say, it's the first cycle of these where I feel like a lot of people are tuned in and watching these meetings. And are saying, and I mean, kudos to the board. Wow, your board members are asking a lot of questions. It's really good, you know what I mean? And. We heard that at three or four of these, these listening stops and um. You know, it's, it's, it has, right, Brian, it, it, it's a lot of work, right? To, to what you said and it's, I think we all take it. Very, very seriously and we recognize the challenges locally. And like, when I framed it out, we've all been doing this a while. And we were able to put forward for the better part of a decade. You know, budgets that did not increase taxes much, did not change the mill rate much. But we had different conditions. We had an enrollment that was diving and we creatively managed that. And we do not have that. And we do not have that for the foreseeable future. So where we talk about, we need to think. Innovatively about our systems and structures. I think when we look at the baselines of the budgets. Everybody involved needs to look at those differently too, because the trends are different and the fixed costs are different.
So Matt, I think those are the key things that you said right there about, you know, efficacy and about efficiency. And about looking out to do things differently, cause we're trying to sell this budget. And you know, Board of Finance is gonna come in and they're gonna have their questions and that. And I think a good thing to stress is on your listening chairs, is to stress with them what you're hearing. You know, and, and, and what the feedback is from the community, the feedback is from the parents, the feedback is from, well, obviously from us. But I think that is important that they understand that because yes, we've, over the years, we've been in our battles with Board of Finance. Going back and forth and back and forth and cutting it this close and this close and look what happened. And we are entering at a different time. And the infrastructure of our buildings is oh so crucial. I mean, for years, we put them on the back burners. Like the buses, and here we are at this juncture. And what the next project is coming down the road. So I think some of those things are positive things to look forward to the future, but things that, that we are now, that we are talking about. How do we, how do we frame, we change and we look at how we're delivering education? I know we've talked about this for years. But how do we do that so they can comprehend? What does, what does the education of tomorrow mean? And that means the infrastructure of buses. Students, teaching staff, what does that mean? Teaching staff, what does that mean in special ed? I mean, because I guarantee they're not gonna understand. All that we understand. So I think as you break, broke this budget down into chunks in the beginning, when you started this conversation. It's a good way to break it down into chunks for them, so they understand the basics from the beginning to the end on that.
Just ask a question, uh, just wanna pick up on something you also mentioned a little while, just a question for the board. We've had a couple of presentations, obviously, but we'll be back next week, but just any information we want. Administration to come back with next week, anything, any outstanding questions that, information?
Is there any way to like, for the people out there who are gonna be like, whoa, you know, last year was six percent and now it's four point nine or five point one or. What's it gonna be next year? Is it gonna be another six percent? And then another, you know, cause we had ten years of one and two percent of one and two, and then that, that, are we setting a?
Trend.
Trend, right? I mean, it's, so much is out of our control with enrollment and special ed increase costs and transportation costs and. Inflation and everything else. But is there anything, anything we can do to say, hey, if we increase the whatever, the C and R by seven hundred K, that's helping us. Uh, or if we do this, we're helping us down the road, that type of stuff. I don't know.
Yep, yep. And we have access to the basic information of. Kind of fixed costs a year out, right? Like we could kinda do a baseline, wouldn't be too hard to pull. I don't wanna put you on the spot. We could pull that together, you know, you know what I mean? Pull some of the basis of that, cause Amy, Amy has to do a lot of that modeling with the Board of Finance. Kind of a longer term look, so that would be some good information to share.
And I, I asked this year, like a year or two ago, and I can't remember the answer, but. Years that we had. Increases in our budget of one and a half percent. Does not necessarily mean our contractual obligations were less than one and a half percent. There was other factors that.
Exactly.
Correct, yep. So the largest being, I mean, there were, there were some years. Where you had, you know, like, uh, the hit contractually could have been two percent of the operating cost. We eliminate. Ten positions, you've taken the value of that whole increase.
And wiping it away.
And wiping it clean. Without impacting program, right? Because it's just. You took retirements and didn't fill them, you kept your class sizes, you kept your priorities.
Excellent point.
So, this might be the opposite of what you all want to hear, but. The difference, so here's my concern. We were talking about the one five eleven. And next, I mean, if that trend continues, we will get more. And then special needs students who need, and, and are. We're leanly staffed on the special need, even if we get these six additional employees. Can we build into the budget? An additional employee cushion for next year? Because if I'm looking at these numbers, if we, so the C and R, if it goes up a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That just brings our percentage a s, up a small amount. Adding another hundred thousand dollars or whatever we would need if we had another. Spot in reserve if our numbers for special needs increased next year, so that mid-year. We're not in a position where you guys can't staff the position that's necessary and legally required to staff. And our teachers in the ILN department are so overloaded with their caseloads, we're back where we were. Can we put that into the budget now? Is that something that we've, we've, are allowed to do?
I mean, you can conceptually talk about that.
On that like twelve to nineteen dollar per household increase, it's probably a marginal.
I think that one of the challenges, interesting, right? Like how do you build in contingencies? Um, I don't know that you would build in a position, right? Or make a hire, but.
I mean, however you guys.
Maybe you look at a contingency, cause the challenge to say like earmarking a hire, we're already talking about reallocating people. Right? So that person's like, okay, I'm being reallocated for a maybe, is a tough way to run. I put your business hat on, right? It's tough, tough way to run a model.
If in the course of the year, if that need came up, wouldn't you just come to us? And say that you need to do a hire, right? During the course of the year.
I mean, what, what we've done in the past, I'll be quite honest, is we make the hire. We take the dollars from somewhere else in the budget and we make it work to the extent we can. The challenge the last two years are, because of that contracted services and tuition, there's just not a lot of flex.
Right, this budget's already lean. And I just, I'm, I'm worried that you're gonna be in this position mid-year next year. Even in October, September, where we have this, an influx. And our, our new teachers can't support the caseload because we have this influx if this chart continues. And then there's, there, where's the money coming from? Are we just, is, are we in a deficit then again next year? And are we just pushing them?
I think, I think one thing in this budget separate, one positive separate from the two years prior is like that area of contracted services. That area of transportation, we have put it out there. We are really truing up those numbers. In the past, we've kind of shell game that a little bit more, right? And um, maybe not put as much in the operating as we, I don't wanna say should have, but because we had parameters, but could have. Where this year, for the first time, those three buckets are put out there for, for you to really say. Alright, these are like live bills out there that we gotta be accountable for. Because some of those, that transportation number, like the positive would be, it gets better. We find out a better way to control that narrative. The enrollment piece. I don't have a great answer for anybody. That's the, the grapple you're going through right now is the same thing we, we struggle with in terms of how, how to respond to those needs. In live time, also in a market where you can't really go out and find that skilled person mid-year. I mean, Neil mentioned, we're very, very fortunate to get these last two hires, uh, we had. And I think it speaks a lot to the, to the organization. And people's desire to come here. But the market for those skilled professionals, for those intensive learning needs kids, right? It's like supply and demand.
That's interesting. And, and I don't think shell game is the correct, no, correct call on that. Cause it's not, you're just basically, as you would in your own budget, you take money from one budget that you don't need to fully pay until the end of the year. You use it now and then you find that money. I mean, it's, it's, there isn't a dime in this budget that we do not spend. So if you put in a cushion for a teacher. You, we'd spend it. I mean, we'd, we'd spend it. You'd, you'd, you'd wanna hire somebody and fill it, cause it would be beneficial to the kids in the schools.
The conversation I think would be centered on that non-lapsing fund. And we could talk about the history of that a little bit more at the next board meeting. Cause we haven't talked much about that with our newer board members, how that came in to be, what the parameters are that, are on that fund. Um, and how maybe we can utilize that fund and continue to look at that fund for the reasons you were talking about. We have a structure there that we've stressed a little bit over time, cause of needs, but we do have a structure that we can keep a certain percentage. Of funds over time to meet those type of needs. Um, and it's, it's called a non-lapsing fund, so. We could bring a little more of that history back, just at the, at the next meeting to, to talk about.
It's hard because the other thing that, I mean, I don't know if we explained, but I, I don't know, someone should explain it better than me, is the fact that we're doing the budget now. Our school year doesn't end until June. The state budget is on a different timeframe as well, as well. So we've got, we're looking at numbers, we're anticipating numbers. And it, it gets to be complicated.
I mean, the swings are significant. I mean, the state, I mean, it, it hasn't gone in the right way in excess costs, but we've had years where they come back and. And the percentage is higher, they move the funding there. And all of a sudden, the, the conversation changes. Dramatically. I mean, it's in, kinda in support of what you're saying, Tara, right? There are just a lot of variables. That are unpredictable. Great question.
Great conversation. Any other?
I would just say. Like being new to this and just kinda say it for anyone listening. I, I think the thing you come down to, right, is past budgets. If you're compared to past budgets, times are different, right? So I think it's. I think it's those pair communities that I, like when I was looking at this before the meeting, that you come back to and you say, Simsbury ranks very well. And then when you see the numbers, that Simsbury is below the median and the mean in what we spend. And you look at our pair communities, there's only one town that has a per pupil below us. And as of right now, they have a higher budget increase, so we could even pass them. And you say, where are we? We're right in the middle for what we're asking. So while five one five may seem like a lot. When the dust settles here, it could have us being the lowest per pupil of our pairs. Still below the median and the mean in all of Hartford. And below the median and the mean in the budgets going up. So if you say, wow, that's a lot, and you say, okay, it may seem like it, but you gotta look around. And. I mean, it's, yeah, five one five's a big number, but I mean, there's sixes and sevens and high fives and. High fours, I mean, they're right there with us. And I mean, and we get a lot of this, especially, that's why I'm saying, put the C and R in there. I mean, because. We can, that C and R has been a problem for years. We're addressing our special ed needs. The six, that, you know, obviously no one likes that. And you know, maybe there's something that could happen there, but I mean. It feels like it's one of those things when you look at it, seeing the numbers that people don't get to see. And I tell people, call, ask questions.
Go online, we have a budget number on our file.
The website for Kate. I mean, this doesn't feel like we're taking, taking it lightly, right? I mean, it feels like we're looking at what others are doing, we're looking at what our needs are, and we're making some tough calls to make it fit.
And I can pull too, cause uh, one of my superintendent colleagues was going around to the Dirk today and just trying to get everybody's increase. I could probably pull together a broader list of, of where people are at, because it. There was a lot of that conversation and I think superintendents are trying to, you know, we had that one slide to try to make that point. Really trying to better understand the entire market rather than, hey, just what's going on individually here, even though that's the decision we need to make. Appreciate those comments.
So we're back here next week. Well, not back here, here, but yeah, we're back together as a happy family. Next, next week. Obviously, if anything pops up, any questions, give a shout, give me a shout, Matt a shout, anybody?
Or information.
Nothing else, just information.
Or information.
And that just leaves us with public audio. Alright, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
No, one second, I was gonna say, we still here. And seconding, and we haven't voted.